We good? Okay. Hello, everybody. Thank you for attending our Capitol Project update. So it's been seven months to the day, actually. So it's May 17th, and we are here January 17th. So exactly seven months since the Capitol Project passed. And I thought it was, well, we collectively as a board and a communication committee, thought it would be a good time to give the community an update about the project as a whole, where we stand on different phases, go through each end of the project, so there's total transparency as to where we are and what the road ahead looks like. And that's what we're going to do tonight. And then after I go through my presentation, we'll open it up for any questions that people might have. And for those that are watching on YouTube, we're going to post the presentation itself on our Facebook page. So if things go by too quickly, you're going to have plenty of opportunities later to go through it at your own speed. Okay, so I want to do a few things tonight. First, just a general review of the Capitol Project. I know it's been seven months, but some of the details might escape you. So just going through what the project entails, what was voted on and subsequently approved. And then we go through the phases of completion. As we'll see in more depth, we're approaching the project in two phases, Phase One and Phase Two. And we'll go through what that entails, why certain projects were included in each phase, and what the road ahead looks like for each of those. We'll also provide an update on the projects that we were tackling in-house. That was a key part of the message that we were pushing out back in the spring, that there were a lot of projects that the district had to consider. Not all of them were included in the Capitol Project, but many of those that were not were given to our in-house Buildings and Grounds team for completion that way. So we're going to give you a quick update on where some of those stand. And then again, we'll open it up for Q and A. So very high level, on May 17th, the voters approved both pieces of the Capitol Project. That was district-wide facility upgrades, which was $14.5 million, and then the multi-sport athletic field, which represented another $8.7 million. That was $23.2 million, that will be achieved, excuse me, a $23.2 million project that will be achieved without raising district school taxes. Now, what is included in each one? Generally speaking, we'll go through a very comprehensive list in a second. But for those district-wide facility upgrades, that would allow the district to address critical needs at all five academic buildings, which includes rebuilding the bathrooms at four schools, all the schools except for the high school, mitigating water infiltration issues at various schools, replacing aging windows, fixing cracked pavement, repairing HVAC, and more. So a lot of things that are seen and a lot of things that are unseen, things that would be very obvious to you were you walking through the halls, but also things behind the walls that hadn't been replaced really in decades. Then there is the multi-sport athletic facility. This is the synthetic turf field and synthetic track at the high school that could support 400 athletes and 1,250 spectators. Okay, so what is our plan for actually completing all this work? As I mentioned, there are two phases that we will attack this project through. Phase One will be for the most critical needs, and I'll spend a bit of time on that in a second, what we mean by that. Generally speaking, though, those Phase One projects are mostly interior projects. So bathrooms, classroom work, the water mitigation, some electrical stuff. There are some external projects, but it's mostly stuff that I think directly impacts student life, whereas the Phase Two are some other needs, some exterior site work, parking lots, walking paths, and of course, the multi-sport athletic facility. The estimated completion date, which I think is probably the juiciest piece of news that most people would want to hear from this presentation, but I want to stress estimated completion date. For Phase One would be summer of 2024, which is not this summer, but next summer. And then for Phase Two would be summer of 2025. Now, there's always variability. I know I'm going to sound like a broken record with all the caveats, but again, this is a, we are trying to give a ballpark so that the community has some idea, but these are not in any way promises that, you know, seasons will begin on the new field on a certain date. We're not getting, going down that road. These are ballpark estimates based on estimates from our construction partner and architectural partner. But some projects within each phase may be completed a little bit earlier, some might be completed a little bit later. Not every project will end on exactly the same day, but these are the ballpark windows we can expect from each phase. All right, now, what is included in Phase One and why? So as I said previously, Phase One includes the most critical needs. These are the projects, these projects are vital to ensuring the continuous operation of our school buildings. So if these areas reached critical failure, these are the kinds of things we would have to fix immediately in order to reopen school. So all of the items included in the Capitol Project were critical needs, as we described back in the spring. But even within critical needs, there are levels to that, right? There are critical needs that absolutely need to be taken care of in order to have children walking through the school. There are other critical needs that are at a level of critical repair, but, you know, should a parking lot, for instance, get another pothole, you can still open school, it's just going to continue to degrade over time. Whereas if you have a bathroom that, pipes that burst, you obviously need to get that fixed before children are walking through the door. So that's the difference between Phase One and Phase Two. These Phase One projects are the ones that cannot wait, which is why they're being addressed first again with a target completion date of summer 2024. Now, I want to go through each school and show which projects are in Phase One, and then later which ones are in Phase Two. So the one Phase One project at the high school is the restoring the masonry wall of the auditorium to mitigate water issues. That is that wall right there. Obviously, this is from a distance. We did not scale the wall to get a closer look, but this is where the auditorium is having some water infiltration issues, and that is obviously of a very critical need to preserve the integrity of the structure, which is why it is included in Phase One. Phase One jobs at the middle school, we have repairing the exterior masonry crack of the D and E wing, replacing various exterior doors and frames, and the big item there, rebuilding the bathrooms. Take a look at what some of those look like. This is that masonry crack in the D and E wing, couple of angles on this. You can see, just from a structural integrity issue or standpoint, this is a definite issue and therefore needs to be addressed right away. Then there are the exterior doors and frames. This is just one example, but the, these are very outdated doors, very old, and they will be included in Phase One as well. And then, of course, the bathrooms. I know these pictures never fail to shock when you see them. The level of disrepair is just profound, rusting, and the tiles and the sinks just almost disintegrating before your eyes. And mind you, this is just what you see. A big issue, perhaps the biggest issue for these bathrooms district-wide, is what you don't see behind the walls, all the plumbing that has been eroding or corroding really for decades. But at the middle school at least, what you see is certainly cause enough for demo and rebuild. Moving on to the building we currently inhabit, Cornwall Elementary School, three items here, replacing all the classroom cabinetry and millwork. There is an electrical transformer that will be moved to a concrete pad, and then, of course, rebuilding the bathrooms here as well. This is that classroom cabinetry. Again, this is, these are just some examples, but it's pretty general throughout the building. These are, if anyone spends any time with kindergarteners through fourth graders, you can imagine how much abuse these eye-level structures take, and, you know, well beyond their usable life and will need to be replaced. Bathrooms here. Again, the pictures, you might think, oh, well, that doesn't look so bad. That is just a reminder of how much work the Buildings and Grounds team has done for decades to keep these buildings running, keep these bathrooms working, and allow kids to actually walk these halls. The issues behind the walls are just profound and beyond the point of small fixes and therefore need to be rebuilt and replaced, but you can see signs of it all over. Moving on to Willow Avenue. So Willow and COH are getting a lot of projects in Phase One, which is easy to deduce why they are our two oldest buildings. Willow Avenue, we will go through all of these, but enclosing the rear loading dock with a roof, remedying some groundwater infiltration near that rear loading dock, replacing the internal central stairway doors, replacing the exterior egress out of the auditorium, placing hand and guardrails building wide, and of course, rebuilding the bathrooms there as well. This is that rear loading dock. You can imagine how much weather this takes throughout the year, and you can just eyeballing it here, see the amount of corrosion that has taken place. So that will be enclosed. These are the, just nearby, camera kind of just pivoting there, groundwater infiltration issues near that rear loading dock, those will be remedied. This is that exterior egress out of the auditorium. This is one of those where a picture says a thousand words. This is that central stairway door. You just imagine an entire school's worth of kids trying to cram through a single door. So this is something that is an obvious need of replacement. These are the guardrails and handrails building wide. Just imagine, again, as a reminder, five, six, seven-year-olds walk the halls of Willow Avenue. With the width of these rails, it is certainly a pressing issue. And these are the bathrooms. Yeah, again, you look at it and don't let the fresh cone of paint fool you. These fixtures are not hipster vintage, you know, these are just that old, and therefore, and then the plumbing behind the walls is just, again, certainly in need of full-on replacement. And that brings us to Cornwall on Hudson Elementary. So again, a fairly extensive list for this Phase One. Repairing, repointing, and cleaning the masonry brick exterior, replacing the exterior windows building wide, repairing and replacing lintels as needed, mitigating water infiltration on the back auditorium wall, repairing the terracotta scroll on front of the building, and then again, this is getting the full rebuilding, the bathrooms treatment. This is some of that masonry brick on the exterior. Again, this is a 100-plus-year-old building, so this has taken a lot of weather over the decades. These are the buildings, I'm sorry, the windows around the building, not what you imagine when you think of in elementary school. So not only will these be more modernized, making the building brighter, frankly, more conducive to an educational environment, but also more efficient as well. This is the result of those, the water infiltration issues. Again, picture tells a thousand words here. And this is that terracotta scroll. Again, just imagine decades upon decades of rain, ice, expansion, these things on a 100-plus-year-old building need to be repaired. Another example of the bathrooms. Again, credit goes to Buildings and Grounds for making these as inhabitable and functional as they are, but at a certain point, they just need to be replaced. Plumbing is beyond the point of just repair. We are at the total rebuild phase. All right, so those are all of the projects in Phase One. Now, what timeline are we talking about? I know we gave a very general estimated end of summer 2024, but what does that mean? So all of these projects have to go through a multi-stage process. It's not just, okay, everything passed, let's just go out and find contractors and get this done. I don't even want to say I wish it was that simple, because frankly, these steps are there for a reason, is to make sure that all the work is done efficiently, that we get good contractors, and that we are in compliance with the New York State Education So we're talking about five stages. There's the design phase, SED review. This is when you submit your designs to the State Education Department, and they go through the whole process to tell you, you know, if you're meeting all of their criteria. Then there's procurement. So we actually have to source the materials to do this job, including, in many respects, the skilled labor to pull it off. Then there's beginning the work and then concluding the work. So for Phase One, we are already through the design phase. That is complete. It is currently in review at the State Education Department. We expect that process to conclude around this March, which would mean in the spring we will be ready for procurement, which puts us right on track to begin work this summer 2023, and then again, concluding work 2024. We'll cover some of the work cadence topics, but generally speaking, we're going to be able to do most of the work over the summers for obvious reasons. We are in school, we are just not going to, we're not going to compromise the school calendar. So summer represents our biggest opportunity, best opportunity to get a lot of this work done, which is why you'll see summer really targeted for these completion dates. That moves, or brings us to Phase Two. So these are the remaining projects. Again, all of these projects are critical, hence their inclusion in the Capitol Project. These remaining projects, obviously, are in critical need of repair, but their condition does not threaten the ability to open school, which is, again, why they are moved to this second phase. These include most of the exterior site work, so as I mentioned before, parking lots, some heating and HVAC work, and of course, the multi-sport athletic facility. The work for Phase Two will be completed one year behind Phase One. So every stage will be lagging a year behind Phase One with a target completion date of summer 2025, which is important to note. We are putting this schedule together as efficiently as we can, so it's not as if we're waiting for all of Phase One to be complete before starting on Phase Two. They will be staggered just a year behind each other. All right, so what's included in Phase Two? We'll run through it just like we did Phase One. So the high school is getting more projects completed in Phase Two, baseboard heating and duct work in the band and chorus rooms, HVAC in the main lobby area, demo and rebuilding the tennis courts, installing drainage to the lower athletic fields and walking paths to the athletic fields. These are the tennis courts. I think of all the photos that we would share during the spring, I think this and the bathrooms seem to get the most audible gasp. But these are the conditions of our tennis courts. Don't have to know much about tennis to realize that this is not what you want to see when you step on the court, and these problems obviously only get worse. It's not as if these are self-correcting, so this is a total demo and rebuild. For the drainage at the lower athletic fields, I remember keeping this, a version of this presentation back in the spring, these pictures that I'm showing were taken not even, not even after a storm, it was several days after a storm, but the water just sits there. So these are the, this is the issue that we'll be addressing through the drainage project. Again, just more of that standing water at these lower fields. Now, for the middle school, again, a sizable share in Round Two. So demo and repaving the rear parking lot, along with a catch basin for that same parking lot, replacing the HVAC system in the locker rooms, replacing the rear entrance storefront system, demoing and rebuilding the entire locker rooms themselves, and replacing a gym air handling unit. So this is the rear parking lot. Don't need to describe each individual pothole, I think they speak for themselves, as does this one. These are the locker rooms. Similar to the bathrooms, it is really apparent how long these have gone without any TLC. So it is beyond the point of just, let's throw up, you know, some new lockers and some paint. They will get the total demo and rebuild treatment. And this is that rear storefront system, which will be replaced as well. And there's that gym air handling unit. Which brings us to Cornwall Elementary, again, right back to where we are. We're going to be demoing and repaving the parking lot and bus loops, and then replacing all classroom ceiling tile and lighting. Similar to the middle school, I mean, it's all an extension of the kind of same system, being on the same general campus here, so same issues with the parking lot, just beyond the point of little fixes, just needs a full demo and repave. These are those, just one example of the classroom ceiling and lighting. Again, these are just representative of the issues being, or the issues that you'll see building wide, and those will all be replaced. And that brings us to the multi-sport athletic facility. So Willow and COH, they're getting all their work done in Phase One, as we described. So the multi-sport athletic facility, there are a lot of line items here, not going to go through each one of these, just for, just so you can kind of understand really the scope of this project. It is such a massive project, so many moving parts, so many things to be designed, so many things to be procured, you know, it's just incredibly complex project. I mean, it just, it goes on and on. It's just pretty stunning how much goes into this. And then what, you know, this is what we're addressing, the current field and track, which is just, you know, not nearly at the level of what you would expect for high school athletics in this area. And this is the current seating. I think that's two of those, if I'm not mistaken, maybe three currently, but that would be replaced with the 1,250-seat bleachers. And that's the full imprint of the athletic facility. You'll notice that the tennis courts are included in that, just for illustrative purposes. Those are not technically part of the same project, but all in the same place, and there's also going to be some rerouting, I guess you could say, of that bus loop to make room for the expanded footprint of the athletic facility, which again, was discussed at length during the spring. Okay, so now, what does the Phase Two timeline look like? Well, pretty much exactly like Phase One, except, as I mentioned, it's just staggered a year behind. So design, SED review, procurement, beginning and concluding the work. The design is currently underway. The SED review will be happening between October of this year, current year, through January of the following year. And then procurement, again, will be in that late winter period of next year, 2024, which will put us in line to start the work in summer 2024 and end summer 2025. Now, I wanted to give a quick update on some of that in-house work. So again, if you recall, we started this process last September. The Facility Committee identified many projects that should be addressed, could be addressed in the Capitol Project, but in order to keep the project's scope within what we could complete without raising taxes, there were certain projects that could not be included. So in consultation with our Director of Facilities, Walter Moran, we identified $2.4 million worth of projects that could be handled by our in-house team. While it will take a few years to complete all of these things, we actually have already made some progress on several of them, and I wanted to give a quick update on that. So there was a, at the high school, there were two projects that were included, replacing the loading dock trench drain. That's actually already been completed, and the results have been fantastic. Then there's the repairing the rear building perimeter walkway, still in the planning stage on that. At the middle school, two projects, the staff parking lot and rear parking lot, installing pole lighting, again, still at the planning stage on that. But the, there's a backflow preventer at both the middle school, Lee Road, Willow, and COH. And on all, in all four instances, currently designing those and preparing for submission to SED State Education Department. So moving that one right along as well. At the Buildings and Grounds office, there were two, two projects, installing pole-mounted lighting for the maintenance yard and replacing the HVAC system, again, still in the planning stages on those. Then at the District Administration Office, we've already received SED approval on replacing the slate roof, planning the, still in the planning stages on replacing the windows and the boiler, boiler and HVAC system, but have received SED approval on the asbestos abatement work on the duct work. So that's 14 projects total, scorecard on that. One of it is completed. Two of them have already been approved by SED, which again, is a process. It's not just filling out an online form and you get approved the next day, so that the significant amount of work went into that. And right behind that, those other four, those backflow preventers are going through that, all that due diligence that is required to submit to the, to SED, and then seven are, you know, still sitting on deck. But again, to have significant process, progress on half of them, and here we are seven months later, I think is, is everything moving in the right direction. All right, so that was a lot of information, so I just want to summarize a bit. Those timelines, just so you can see them side by side. So for Phase One, again, design is already complete. We are in SED review, should only have a couple months left on that. Procurement will be this spring. We will begin work this summer and conclude work the end of next summer. Phase Two is a year behind all of those phases. So design currently underway. SED review is going to be next, starting next fall into January of 2024, procurement being right after that for a couple of months, which will set us up to begin work the following summer with ending the summer of 2025. A couple of important notes to mention, I kind of alluded to some of them already, but just want to make some points very clear. Safety first. The projects are managed so that workers have no interaction with students. So you will not have a construction team working and kids, you know, finagling their way around the hallways. These are managed, these are planned and managed such that that will not happen. We will also ensure the continuous operation of school activities. This is kind of baked into the SED process. SED approval ensures that students and staff have sufficient access to bathrooms and other essential facilities. I know you, whenever you hear that we'll be replacing the bathrooms, it's like, well, what are they going to use? This will be done in stages progressively so that students always have access to these essential facilities during the school day. A project simply cannot secure SED approval without that. The work will be done as quickly as possible, or quickly as feasible, or perhaps as quickly as is wise. Although the bulk of the work will be done during the summer, as I mentioned, progress will be made during the school year whenever possible, like during evenings and weekends. And finally, I know we have mentioned this at board meetings, but this is an important note for the community to understand, the facilities will not be open for public use during the summer. This is an unfortunate but necessary side effect of this kind of work. The summer is just our best chance to complete the project within a reasonable timeframe The summer is just our best chance to complete the project within a reasonable timeframe without disrupting student life. So that is something that we will, as a community, will have to plan for, but certainly the result at the end of it will be all of these improvements being made district-wide, so a small price to pay in the long run. With that, I would like to open it up to questions that anybody might have, and we will do our best to give you answers tonight. If further information is needed, we can follow up. Yes? We'll give you a microphone so YouTube can hear.
So you said all the work is going to be done mostly during the summertime when children aren't in school, but what about those children through seven through 12 that may need to go to summer school, and the high school's the place where summer school is completed at? So how will that work? Will they do like an online summer school, or, I mean, that's future, but just to, and then also regarding the pole lighting that could be done in-house for the middle school back parking lot? Obviously, that would be happening after that parking lot is completed, correct?
I would assume so. I don't have that schedule, you know, intimately, but that certainly makes sense. But I think the other question, just about summer work.
Yeah, so for the mandatory things like our ESY, which is our extended summer program for our special needs students, and our summer school for graduation requirements, we'll still come up with a plan for those to proceed. It's important to note, what Mr. Cardy highlighted is very little work being done at the high school for Phase One, which allows us to keep that facility open for our kiddos. We're still going to significantly limit it public use, just because our in-house team is still responsible for getting all of our schools open and ready for the first day of school for next school year, but those essential programs will continue to run.
And I should have, it was up there, maybe I didn't say it. That's for public use of the facilities, no public use of the facilities during summer. So that's not inclusive of school activities. Anybody else? Yes?
I would like to know how the concerns...
Can we just, just nobody would be able to hear it.
I would like to know how the concerns of neighbors living next to the high school are being addressed in the planning of the multi-sport facility.
So there have already been meetings with neighbors to hear the concerns loud and clear, while all of them will not be able to be addressed, like not having the facility at the high school and things of that nature won't be able to be completely addressed. There's still a long way to go. The planning is in its very beginning stages. We're significantly focused on Phase One because that work is beginning this summer. So conversations will continue. We'll continue to do what we can to address those concerns as we plan for Phase Two in the coming year.
Thank you. I'm referring specifically to, obviously, there's facilities going in, so that's a moot point. I'm referring to concerns regarding noise, light pollution, traffic, water runoff, and well contamination. So those are the specific things I'm referring to.
Yes, we've heard them loud and clear, and they'll be continued to work through with our construction managers, our architects, to address those concerns to the best extent practicable.
Thank you. Will we have to come to these meetings to get updates, or given the close proximity of our properties, will there be communication between us directly?
So there's going to be communication out to the entire community with regards to updates on the project. Again, Phase Two is way too far out to have any kind of meetings. I haven't even had meetings with the architects on the specific design of Phase Two to this date. So as we get closer to that time, we'll continue to meet with interested community neighbors and the like, but right now, it's just far too early. We're focused on Phase One.
Okay, thank you.
I think the, that must be assigned the presentation. Oh, yes.
Just one other question. You referred to drainage for the lower athletic fields, and I know there was an issue of drainage for the multi-sport facility as a hurdle that came up in the December 5th meeting. So where is the drainage for the lower fields going to go? Where is the plan for that water to drain? Because it's currently draining on property next to the high school.
I'm trying to recall the discussion at the December 5th. I don't think it was a, I don't remember it being an obstacle. I think it was just a topic that was discussed. So...
He referred to it as major hurdle. It was like 54 minutes in. But regardless, the drainage from the lower fields is going to be addressed as well, and curious where all that drainage is going to go.
Still too early. Like I said, we haven't, we haven't completed the plans for the athletic facility. That's in Phase Two.
Okay, even the drainage at the lower fields, that's Phase Two?
All of that's Phase Two.
So just to be aware that that currently drains onto neighboring property. So hopefully in the plan, that'll be addressed to not drain onto the neighboring property.
Obviously, I don't recall that, the specifics of that piece as well as you do, but I do remember it being a constructive conversation. Certainly, it made sense for the architect and construction partner to be aware of it so that it's going to be addressed. It wasn't brought up as being, you know, insurmountable hurdle, but just something that through the normal process of planning and designing was on their radar and they would handle. So certainly, as Mr. Date has described, those, the specific answers that you're seeking, no one has come up with those yet because we just haven't reached that stage of the process, but the fact that it has been brought up at a, in a presentation to the board, I think is a good sign at this point that it is going to be handled appropriately.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, too, for those of us who do not have children who attend the school district, we have to seek out the information on our own in terms of what's going on, when the meetings are. I know that you do email blasts out to families in the community whose kids attend the school, but those of us do not, who do not have children, do not get those emails. So I don't know if there's another way that you can, you can try to reach out to the community? I mean, I, you know, on my own, my neighbors were looking at the website, were trying to find information. There is no direct communication for us who, you know, don't have kids in the school.
We, every time we have one of these events or meetings, we always make sure that it's in the Cornwall Local at least a week in advance, which it was in this past issue. So I am not aware of a better way to do it. I mean, we just can't do mailers every time we have a meeting. That's obvious cost, and we are a publicly funded organization, obviously, so. Yeah, we do have an interest in getting everybody here. I think the Cornwall Local is probably going to be your best bet. That is true. I wrote those emails myself, so if you, if you sign up, you will get those emails. Well, I don't want to get into a back, I do get like eight emails that are kicked back to me every time I send those emails out, so perhaps there was an error in entering them, but if you email me directly, my web, my email is accessible directly through the website, I can correct that and you can be included moving forward. Anybody else? So I'll just add, in closing, well, first of all, thank you everybody for coming. Thank you everybody who watched. We will post this, the presentation itself, on our Facebook page, and you can look through it at your leisure. We'll also post it on our website as well, and the link will be available after the live stream is concluded on the CCSD BoE YouTube page. Thank you everybody for coming, and have a good night.